Okay. Hello, everyone. This is the August 2025 Meeting of the Sustainable Bethel Commission. I'm Catherine Keibert. I'm the chairman. And we can pledge allegiance to the flag. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God.
Good job.
Justice. Okay, so tonight. Did someone say something? Okay. Tonight, we have a guest speaker. Bob Babcock is going to talk to us about the Small Business Energy Advantage Program. Sunny has been leading that project with Janice from Economic Development. So I am going to hand that over to Bob to give a little mini presentation. Are you good, Bob?
I'm good. Can you everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. Are we all ready?
Well, is he okay to share a screen if he needs to? Yep. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're ready. So go ahead and share your screen.
I was already introduced, but my name is Bob Babcock. And really, thank you all very much for spending the time this evening to learn about about the program. The program is called the Small Business Energy Advantage. And it's works through Eversource. Eversource is the money behind the program and makes the program possible. The program centers around small business. Small business can be defined anywhere from, you know, a small nail salon to somebody with 150 employees. It's it's a bit it's not. We're not doing work for Pratt &amp; Whitney or Grumman Aircraft, but it's typical business that would be in your in your community. And to start with, if a person wants to get knowledge about the program, become better informed about the program, there's no obligation money wise or any obligation to get involved with the program. But the the main focus of the program is to reduce energy consumption in the small business. That's the program. So bringing these programs to your business community, what would they be? Well, reducing opportunities would be things like lighting opportunities. A lot of older buildings have a lot of fluorescent lights, the tube lights. We want to put those into an LED light mode. There's about three times the amount of energy used in fluorescent lighting than the LED lighting. Secondly, a big one is adding insulation. Obviously, we know that heat costs money. Heat is an energy source. And if we can add insulation, then we can reduce. Refrigeration is another one. Typical restaurant, they have freezers, they have refrigeration. There are ways to put modules on various refrigerators to reduce their energy use. There are things what are called RTUs, rooftop units. They're air conditioning and heating units that are on tops of buildings. They use an awful amount of energy, awful, a large amount of energy. There are ways in which we can, through modules, through energy reducing devices, we can cut the energy usage from a rooftop unit. Pipe wrap, things like what the pipes that come off of a hot water heater, we can wrap them. Therefore, using less energy to make hot water. So those are just a few of the things that are offered in the program. But now we say, how do we get into the program? Let me describe the process. Through Janice, we are going to send out an email that has been designed by Sunny that we can get your small business community to respond to the program and see if there's any interest. If there is any interest and they respond to the request, I personally contact them. I qualify the business. Are they a likely small business in your community that has in their building devices that could benefit from the introduction to the program? Then, if they are, then I send out an auditing team. The team goes in and they count every single fluorescent light. They see how much insulation is there. They're see what kind of refrigeration. They take what is called an audit of all of the or an assessment of all of the devices that use energy. We then take those and we put them on a spreadsheet and we submit all of those devices to Eversource. Eversource, through their computer system, I guess, they say, okay, if you take out this device and put in that device, take out this device, put in that device, you will then save so many kilowatt hours, kilowatts in your facility. The reduction in kilowatts bring forward an incentive, I use the word encouragement, for the client to get involved in the program. And the program that's presented to the client, now bear in mind, there's no obligation, there's no dollars. But let me give you an example. I did a relatively small church. The assessment came up to $20,000 to bring the church up to an area of being a little bit, well, not lit, but quite a bit more efficient in their energy use. Eversource, they use the word incentive. They gave the church $14,000 towards that upgrade. And that was for labor and material. So the $20,000 project now became a $6,000 project. The $6,000 project that the building was given, a $6,000 interest-free, on-bill financing loan, interest-free for 60 months at $100 a month. While they were paying that $60 a month or $100 a month for the 60 months, the energy bill for the client went down roughly $135 to $140 a month. So in summary, a $20,000 project with a $14,000 incentive, actually, the client saved at the end of the day $40 a month. So the program makes sense. Not all programs come out to these numbers. This is the nice example of what opportunities are out there. Sometimes that $40 a month doesn't show up as well. Sometimes it shows up better. But again, the client goes through the assessment with the Eversource computer system. And only after all the assessment is done, the proposal is written, then the client says, I would like to proceed. Or they don't have to proceed. It's totally up to the client. No obligation, no cost to the client. So it's a it's a program that's been quite successful. It's been around for a while. And I think would be something that would benefit your small businesses in Bethel. So that's the crux of the situation of the program. I'm here to answer any questions. I can tell you that the program has worked quite well. And there's constant upgrades to the program. They will add things to the program. They also detract, take things out of the program. They used to have screw-in bulbs with the program. They no longer do that. But they've added things as well. So it's a fluid program and it's been well received by the by the small business community.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question. You mentioned the insulation. Can you tell us more about the types of materials that are available? And like what type of insulation is used? Is it the most earth eco-friendly, sustainable option? Can you speak about the materials given?
Yeah, there's a whole variety to choose from, depending upon what insulation was going to be most effective to the area, whether it's going to be bats blown in or whatever. But the person that does the there's a separate person that comes out and actually looks, looks at the building, very knowledgeable person trained, that they will give options to what would be available for this particular space for these dollars. It's not just it's not just a cookie cutter, okay? You've got this, you have to have that. Whatever options are out there are available to the client.
Okay. And what happens when a business is leasing a space and they don't necessarily have the permission to change the building or something?
Excellent question. Excellent question. Within the proposal from Eversource, there is a separate page that if it is a leased building, the landlord has to sign off on it. As we sit here tonight, the the one that benefits just as much as the tenant is the landlord because they're getting the capital upgrade to their property. But they have to sign off on it. That they understand that it's an upgrade and they have to agree that it's okay to do that upgrade on their property. But the person that benefits just as much as the tenant, I've always thought, is the landlord himself because they're getting a capital appreciation in their building.
Is there some sort of liability insurance that comes with the upgrades?
I never have been asked that question, but knowing it's Eversource, I would, I would very much assume that there would be. But I've I'm sorry, but I've never been asked that question.
Okay.
Bob, in such a situation where the landlord is obviously, the property is getting the upgrade, any kind of finance payments are still made by the tenant, the business owner, correct?
Say again, I'm sorry, Sunny.
If the business location is leased and there's financing involved for any kind of upgrades, while the landlord approves, the finance payments are still made by the tenant?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. So in fact, the landlord is getting an upgrade for free?
That's correct, yes. The relationship is with the person who has the account with Eversource. They're the ones that sign off on it.
Krista?
Yes, you mentioned the church. Was that a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, well, was it? In that case, yes, and they did not have to pay taxes.
Okay.
Tax-free, yes.
So someone like like the Historical Society here in Bethel owns their building? And I would imagine that it could probably use some upgrade.
Yes, 501(c)(3).
Okay.
It would be eligible for not having to pay tax on the entire project.
Okay.
Labor and material, labor and material. And all of the things, as I mentioned, everything in here is done by Eversource-vetted contractors. So they are, actually, they have to, I think it's annually, re get re-approved for the being an Eversource SBAA contractor. But they're all vetted, they're financial, they're secured, their insurance is vetted, everything is vetted. So it's it's a program that Eversource truly supports, but also Eversource sets the rules for how much insurance they have to have. You know, what their credit rating is, all of these things. So we know that the people that are doing the work are approved as a an approved, vetted, Eversource contractor.
Does Eversource pick them for you or do you get to pick from approved vendors?
I get to I get to pick from approved vendors. I work with I work with three different approved vendors. They're all equally great. And then I've not worked with a bad one yet, but I I have three that I really enjoy working with because I work all over Connecticut and Western Massachusetts. So one of my vendors is up on the Connecticut-Massachusetts line. Another one is one of your neighbors, by the way, Brookfield, good company that I work with. I thought they'd be good to team up with you as one of the contractors, only because they're right around the corner. So if a client had a question or they needed a quick audit, we could accommodate that client twice by a contractor that's in your backyard.
What's the smallest project dollar-wise and largest project?
That's my smallest one was received today. It was an insurance agency in in Barhamstead, Connecticut. Their electric bill was $75 a month. I don't know how you do that, but it was $75 a month. My largest contractor is a is a company, a company in North Haven, was $375,000. So the range goes from those two numbers.
Peter, Tia, any questions?
None for me, thank you.
Nope.
Anybody else have any other questions? Did you want to tell everyone what the next step is?
Yeah. So we're meeting with Janice next. And once we have the communications approved by Janice, we will start sending them out to the local small businesses via email. And Bob will be sending via direct mail. And we'll also see how, you know, we can bring this as a local seminar to small businesses as an extent.
Sounds great. Bob, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Me, Bob?
Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I I I'm excited about these programs and I think you're going to enjoy it. And I think it's it's something great that's working for your small business community. There's no obligation, they only benefit if they like it. They don't have to move forward, but it's a program that I really enjoy working with. And I'm I'm enjoying working with, I've had enjoyed working with your community already. So Catherine's been fine, Janice and Sunny have been fun to work with.
Thanks, Bob. And I just wanted to add, so we have about 2,000 odd businesses in town as per Janice's number. But you know, not everyone might actually be a suitable candidate. But we will be tracking how many businesses we're able to reach and how many have an interest and qualify and ultimately are contacted by Bob and, you know, have a proposal from Eversource all the way down to, did they actually get a benefit out of it? So we're putting in place the whole tracking mechanism so that by the end of this year or cycle, we should have all the data so that going forward, we as a commission know if this is something that's worth continuing to work with.
Krista has her hand up. Okay, well, thank you, Bob.
Krista has her hand up.
Oh, Krista, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all right. Sunny, could you make sure that the Bethel Historical Society is on that list?
Thank you.
They will probably, they will probably, the Historical Society will probably benefit not so much from the lighting, but from the insulation. That's typically what happens, probably an older building.
It is. It's actually the second, it's the second meeting house in Bethel. So it's from the 1800s. And the windows upstairs also are original. Yeah. But they also, they have a, they have a space down that they rent out. And that has the fluorescent bulbs.
Good.
So I know like right there that there's, and they just installed an air conditioning unit. So it would be advantageous to make sure that that's, you know, working at its greatest efficiency.
Exactly. And 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 things like that, closer 501(c)(3), so they're not going to pay tax on the project. And you'll find that those two things are going to be the biggies. But also, the way the programs work, the more of these opportunities that a client takes up on, the higher the incentive. So because we just now brought in fluorescent lighting, that makes that makes it so that they now have two measures. So if they were doing just insulation, they may get, well, they will get one incentive. But by having two measures, they'll get more incentives. They may go from 30% to 40% or 30 to 50, depending upon over air raiders. The more levels of measures, so that's, I would love to do that one first. That would be great. So we'll see some, that'd be good, okay.
Hey, there's. Bob, you're welcome to stay and listen to our boring meeting. But we don't have to. Well, that was a little bit of being facetious. Anyway, but you're welcome to stay. And otherwise, you know, Sunny will be in touch and looking forward to launching this very soon.
Very good. Thank you. Nice meeting all of you. Enjoy. Bye-bye. Good night. Good night.
Yeah.
Good night.
Yeah, it's, I skipped over on public comment correspondence because I wanted to make sure that Bob could get this, talk to us. So are there, is there any correspondence?
I don't.
You don't have anything?
No.
Are there any public comments? Okay. All right, so.
I just point out, we didn't vote or ever discuss the handout that's going out to businesses with Sustainable Bethel Commission name and town department names. So I just wanted to point that out based on the previous conversations we had about voting or not voting about things that we put out. We didn't vote on it. Now that I need to, I just want to exemplify that. If we're going to be fair, let's be fair.
It's an economic development initiative. So they'll be taking me to the Economic Development Commission.
Right, but the work that's being done on behalf of the Sustainable Bethel Commission, right? Sunny's efforts, all of these things is part of the commission work. And like Peter pointed out before, when we were talking about the BEI stuff, if we're going to put out things as the town, maybe it's worthwhile voting on things. Again, I don't need to vote on it because I know the work she does is great. But it's it's about fairness and accountability all around. So just pointing it out.
Okay. All right, Chairman's report, I really only have one thing to talk about. Dana, this is her last meeting. She has sold her house. She is moving.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I would like to recognize Dana Desaro. Tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize and express my deepest appreciation for the work that Dana Desaro did while serving on the Sustainable Bethel Commission. Dana was appointed as a Sustainable Bethel Commissioner July 2023, I believe, right?
Yeah.
She has been a dedicated volunteer, actively contributing her time, energy and expertise to the commission. Her impact on our success has been noticeable and she will be deeply missed. In the short time of your appointment, you have been a conscientious, vocal and consistent observer of government compliance, including the rules related to FOI and Roberts Rules of Order, while balancing the mission of the Sustainable Bethel Commission and the representation of all Bethel residents, attending and actively contributing to Sustainable Bethel Commission events, including Earth Day, Pride, the Walk Audit and more, offering invaluable support in so many ways, helping to develop the Sustainable Bethel Commission bylaws and subcommittee structure within the parameters of the commission's mission, consistently bringing insightful ideas and fresh perspectives that have positively impacted our community. Dana, in your short appointment to the Sustainable Bethel Commission, we are incredibly grateful for everything you've done. We completely understand that you need to move closer to work. Commuting is not fun and definitely a time waster. Your presence, dedication and contributions will be truly missed, not just by this commission, but by the entire town of Bethel. That said, we know this isn't goodbye forever. We look forward to staying in touch and we wish you all the best. Please know you're always welcome to reach out anytime. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll email this to you and I'll email this to you so you have a copy. That's all I have for.
So I'm not quite sure where I want to stay permanently or later too, but I'm saying I'm very. Not far, not far at all.
So that's all I have under my report, okay? All right. Consideration of approval, minutes of July 16th, 2025. Do we hear a motion? Second?
Second.
Oh, okay, whoever wants it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I think there was a typo, sorry. So let's go back. Sorry. Undo the thing. Um, when it was stating that we were going to meet in the subcommittee, I think it's backwards.
Okay.
Just.
I don't, I don't have it printed out.
Yeah.
I'll look, I'll look at it.
Here, you can have my copy. It's just like wording.
Sure.
It just sounded funny, but I think it's bylaws subcommittee.
Which section, which, just, just so I know.
Yeah, I think where it says like, we're going to meet as, when we made the bylaw subcommittee, and then we're going to meet as the bylaw subcommittee.
Correct. So you put, Tia and Peter, you weren't here last time, right?
Nope.
Tia? Oh.
I think it says.
Sorry. Um, I was at the last meeting.
No, no, you weren't, no. Okay, so the second will be from you. It says subcommittee bylaws.
Right, but but we didn't talk about the subcommittee bylaws. We talked about the commission bylaws and the subcommittees.
No, so this is motion to amend, to amend the motion to split into two parts, subcommittee structure and subcommittee bylaws.
Okay, yeah.
Motion to form a subcommittee bylaws. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so bylaws subcommittee.
Bylaws, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that was it.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think we need to do this over because, okay, so I made a motion.
To just amend the.
Yeah, right, yeah. But Dana made the motion, right? And then with the correction and then Sunny second, okay? And all in favor? Abstentions and Peter and Tia, okay?
I'm talking to the committee.
Oh, no, she's not here.
She's not here. So she can't even do anything. She's not here. Just, okay. All right.
I told her, no, I talked to her. So let me just write myself in.
She'll sign on in three hours.
All right, okay.
All right, so we did that. And now we have discussed and consider bylaws presentation by the bylaw committee, subcommittee. Yeah, if you can, yeah. Do you want me to?
You want to bring it up?
Okay.
Okay. So Krista, Dana and my sub will met once a week for the past month to, you know, update, edit, review, discuss the Sustainable Bethel Commission bylaws. So this is on the Google Drive. Everyone has access to it. So if you can review it for the next meeting and have whatever comments or suggestions, and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Who has a question?
Yeah, I'm not done though. So we can let you guys know what we did and we can read through it. But to give you guys time to consider and really be careful with the details of the document, we're gonna, it's shared and then you can have your comments and suggestions at our next meeting. So pretty straightforward, we created sections that we named articles. So you can see Article of Establishment. No? Oh, there you go. So the, some of the text we took from the intended proposal of the Charter Review Commission, but since Sustainable Bethel Commission was not approved to be part of the proposed charter changes, we switched back to what we had before. And the wording is basically just like, no more than 10 members, no less than five, and shall be residents of Bethel, Connecticut. We had a little bit of a discussion about whether or not we needed to state that it was registered voters. But since it is part of the municipal government, we figured it's not necessary since the municipal government has its own guidelines governing how to appoint people. So we didn't feel a need to include it. But if you guys feel differently, you can add a comment. Article two is mission and objectives. We just tightened up the wording, made it a bit more, made it less passive and just more sort of active and assertive into the work we are doing. A little bit of growth and sort of moving away from just being sustainable Connecticut directed or, you know, guided by that and sort of moving beyond the way we're growing. If you can scroll down, the objectives, again, just like trying to word it more assertively, more active or call to action, including like civic responsibility and direct input from participation of the community, which has always been a huge aspect. which has always been a huge aspect of what we've done in terms of, you know, equitable access to uh municipal programs. The overarching objective is the enhancing quality of life for current and future Bethel residents. Uh, that wasn't stated before, but we felt very strongly about um in our work in promoting sustainable practices, um, you know, looking to the future is important. Really making it obvious that we are trying to support the municipal govern- uh departments, boards, commissions, in achieving their sustainability goals. If you can scroll down a little, a little bit more, just want to check. Okay, never mind, can you scroll back up? Oh, promote the adoption and advocate for benefits of sustainability across all sectors, community, including residents, businesses, non-governmental organizations. The program we just listened about is a great example of that. Uh, if you can scroll down. The maintaining certifications, designations, and accreditation. We moved away from stating just sustainable CT because in the future we can apply to other programs or funds and things like that. Um, equitably promoting the health and well-being of Bethel residents, facilitating the protection of the environment, and mindful consumption of resources to respect the finite capacity of the natural environment. All of us had a lot of uh strong feeling about this, um, just because it really acknowledges the finite capacity of what we have around us and the, the need for responsible use of all that. Before, it had reducing consumption, and we felt that that was a little bit too imposing. A sort of a, a goal that we may not be able to assert. So the mindful consumption, I think, is a, is a more realistic um way of achieving that. Um, we had a lot of discussion around that, so that was a fun. And then just documenting, uh maintaining, sorry, establishing, documenting, maintaining a short-term and long-term goals uh that we are to review and update according to the town uh Plan of Conservation and Development. That's a document that happens every 10 years. And in the current plan, there is a ton of sustainability goals that the different departments and different aspects of town um are working towards. And, you know, as a commission, we discussed that we would love to be that resource, that support um for the town to meet its goals.
So can I ask just, because that's, that's a good little question there, a little, little paragraph. So would doing something like a sustainability plan and assessment kind of fit into that, what you're talking about there? Because that would kind of drill it down from the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is a guide, really.
Uh, is there?
No, there isn't. I'm just asking.
Well.
There, it doesn't exist.
Right, but it's, it's called plan.
Right, what I'm saying is, established document maintains a set of short-term and long-term goals, which are to be reviewed, uploaded, updated according to the, right. So in the town, the Plan of Con- the P O C D is a guide, and it's very general for each department, each section, and everything like that. And typically what happens is you have to drill it down. So do it, so I know that there's sustainability language in that. Um, but it doesn't drill it down into specifics, so I'm right.
That's dependent on each department, and it would be, right, like they have their own agency to reach their goals. But if one of our intentions is to be a resource for the departments, it would, we would have to be in collaboration with them. So, yeah.
So something like that would be in collaboration.
Kind of when the departments have questions or they're looking to pursue these goals, they would reach out to us and we could provide the support and the expertise and, you know, the resources behind accomplishing those goals, because like those goals aren't the primary focus of their departments. So we could kind of take some load off.
And, and potentially do some research for them so that they could achieve those goals, or they would know where to go to next steps.
Right, so that would be a function, if it gets to that point, that would be a function of this commission. Is that what you're saying?
Any, any other questions so far? Tia, did you have something to say before? I'm not sure.
Oh, hey, no, I, this was just a general comment. It's like, could you kindly please, and I am so sorry, I know it's out there on the drive, but I've been having a lot of computer problems. Can you just email this to me? Or to us so that um I have a PDF and um.
It was not a PDF. It's going to be, we're going to do the editing and the commenting on the drive. So tomorrow I will share it to you directly again.
Perfect. That would be excellent. Thank you.
Just share it to the whole convention, the link. This way it'll be easier for everybody.
Yeah, I, I got some nasty virus on my computer and had to redo everything, and now I'm having a hard time accessing things. So um I, that, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
All right, you still need to share permission to Peter.
You know, I'm gonna get, I'll get, I'll get that to Peter.
Because uh if I share it with him, he won't be able to open it either way.
Yeah, but I'll get it. That's fine.
All right, so then Article three is membership. You can see the highlight. My question is, should we remove that, since that's not really what uh the, like, we don't really have um term limits currently? So is that something that we want to put into the membership of the, you know, of our commission?
That wording was also included in the previous bylaws. And to my knowledge, has never been enforced. Uh, so if we're not enforcing it, perhaps we don't want it there.
Right, so.
We want something different that we would feel enforcing, or I don't know. Up for discussion is where really, where we like.
Yeah, that's why it's highlighted. We know it's going to be a, a topic of discussion, basically. Um, tenure, again, the same thing, like there's no real term limits, so it's all pretty straightforward, like, you know, jargon of the tenure, the officers. So the only difference uh would be the treasurer, if you can scroll down. That's technically the only position that doesn't exist at the moment. Um, again, we started this with the idea of being included in the proposal uh for the Charter Review. So is it something that we leave in as a guide for the future? Is it something that isn't necessary, but it's all pretty straightforward, sort of, you know, what the treasurer does to be responsible, though.
You do have to look at to the future, so, you know, that's, that's something to think about for all, everything, you know.
And if you could scroll down a little bit, there's a part. Oh, the treasurer shall present a brief report at the regular monthly commission meeting and shall prepare and present an annual budget slash financial report at the meeting prior to the Board of Selectmen budget hearings. Again, this is the idea that in the future will be, we could be part of the budget hearings that the Board of Selectmen would approve or disprove uh to bring to the budget referendum. You know, the future would be great, so we can, you guys can comment on that um in the document. And we also had a bit, if you can scroll down, oh, wait, no, sorry, too far. Yeah, part three. This bit we copied, pasted from one of the other commissions uh in town, because it talks about specifically accepting gifts, donations, and devices of land or other personal or real property or, and may recommend to the town the acceptance or rejection thereof. Gifts shall be considered as they pertain to sustainability purposes, such as, but not limited to, uh conservation, community events, and open space. So the idea is that maybe one day, somebody would love to gift a parcel of land that we could use for open space that the town would own. And, you know, for, as a commission, we would recommend um accepting or not accepting for whatever reason, as long as it's uh maintains sustainability purposes and goals of the community. That's something to consider.
Uh, I believe there is language in the charter about the municipality accepting any type of gifts, especially land or anything like that, so whenever, when, when you're reviewing this, you may want to look to see if there's that already exists, if there's already a process in place.
Yeah, that's it. This is what we found when looking.
So that's, is that part of the charter?
Yep.
So you're, we're going to double it down in this, for this commission as well?
We're not on the charter?
No, I know.
Part of the charter.
Pointed by the first elector, approved by the board of selectmen, and sworn in.
I don't think that every single board or commission or department has to do with devices of land. That's the difference, that, that's the thing to include as part of sustainability. I think if everything else is pretty like basic, hopefully, legal, dark, community.
We can look into it more too. I, I wanted to say that the, the difference was uh the commission considers it, the town makes the decision. So this is our little, can we consider it?
So if someone comes to us out of the blue and says, oh, I want to donate. Donate a piece of land to the town?
To the town in general, I don't think we'd have what to say, but if they came to us and said they wanted to donate, we would say yes or no, we would like it, and then we'd go to the town and they'd have to make the final decision.
Yeah, I'm just. So if someone would come to the Sustainable Bethel Commission wanting to donate, and I'm going to use the land as example, right? Wanting to donate land to the Sustainable Bethel Commission. Is that what you're talking about?
I don't think anybody would donate land directly to us. I think it's just having the language available that if somebody were to try to donate gift or something along that, we would have.
Conservation or open space.
Right, like the other example we talked about was what you were saying about somebody wanting to sponsor uh an Earth Day or some other type of community event. Like, if we think it's a good idea and uphold sustainability goals that the commission or the town has, we can say, this is a great idea, you should really consider doing this, assuming that they didn't go to the town directly. Because like you said, the town has its own process.
Right, so, so if someone was, okay, so, maybe I'm going to use this a little bit because I'm confused. So if someone wants to sponsor something related to Earth Day, that we're going to the Earth Day now, I'm forgetting the land, because that, that's too big right now. It's creating a process to accept something, information?
It's creating a process for discussion to consider. We understand that the commission doesn't have the authority to accept anything on behalf of the town.
Okay, it's just for discussion, okay.
And you might have more expertise on this, so you.
No, I've gone through this stuff before, that's why I'm questioning, that's okay. No, but as long as.
And maybe the wording, and maybe the wording needs to be, oh, oh, different.
That's something that we need to talk about.
Yeah.
What the role is in, related to something like that, and then transitioning it over to the town or whatever. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the secretary.
That's all the same.
Yeah, that's the same. You can keep going.
That's all the same.
All the same. And then the only other difference is the, the special subcommittees. Um, basically just to support the growth and optimization of Bethel Resources for the future. The subcommittee structure expands collaboration with community partners. And the commission is structured by subcommittees to disperse tasks among commissioners. All subcommittees should include educational outreach. Additional subcommittees shall be created and resolved as needed. And the only ones we included were Conservation, uh Municipal Sustainability Resource, and the Sustainable CT Certification Subcommittee, since we're going to have to reapply basically starting next year. So that's what we have, and you guys can read through it carefully. And, you know, make comments, ask questions, suggest wording. Um, you can make comment on the document itself. Please just make the comments on the document itself. We don't need a thousand emails and, you know, additional uh word documents. Yeah, like this is where we do the work together. This is where the edits will be made together. Um, so there's no need to respond to an email or create a separate document. You can, Amanda, can you actually make an example of how to make a comment? So you can highlight a word.
Do subcommittees that spelled wrong. Go up a little bit.
You're in the browser of the documents. You have to be in the documents to be, to be able to make changes, I think. So go to edit on the top, see the left? No, she has the dot.
Oh, I see. Clear all.
Let others note, note, annotate too.
Can you just click on the, like, go up like that?
Okay, well, you essentially can highlight the word that is misspelled or the paragraph you have a question or comment or suggestion about. And you can pick the little comment icon at the top and include your comment that way.
Where is the comment? Uh, where is the?
Next to the little clock of all the way at the top.
Can you, oh, I see, right here, okay.
Any questions? Uh, Krista and Dana, do you want to need, add anything?
I would just, you know, with this started because um we were hoping to be a part of the charter, the new charter, and, and reviewing the document at um and also wanting to put subcommittees in there so that we could, you know, have some some, you know, have the work, uh, you know, have people take, um, take responsibility for different portions of it. And in, most of it is the same, since we were not accepted into the charter, but we just sort of beefed it up a little bit to give us a little bit more, um, you know, hopefully to act more as a resource and have people, you know, come to us and, you know, want to discuss different things, so.
Tia, your hand is up.
Yeah, um, so, and you may have said this, but it's really hard to hear because you, there was a lot of um overspeak. When do you need these comments back to you all? Bye?
Be prepared to discuss the comments at our next regular meeting. So you can make them by the week before, and then be prepared to discuss them at the next meeting.
This is just a rough draft. We wanted, we want all of your input. We wanted to work for everybody and to stand the test of time going forward.
Anybody else? Good job.
Thank you.
Very fantastic.
Good job. Thank you. Fantastic job. All right. So we'll put it on the agenda for next month to talk, to continue to discuss the, um, bylaws for the Sustainable Bethel Commission. Okay, so the next item is discuss and consider Sustainable Bethel Commission submission to the American 250 Bethel Program. Um, I just put it on there if anybody is interested. If not, that's perfectly fine. Or you can do it within another, um, uh, organization that you are working with. We don't have to discuss it tonight, but, um, just to bring it to your attention. So are there any ideas related to Sustainable Bethel Commission for the, um, America 250 Bethel Program? Or, yes, go ahead, Krista.
So I'm on the Historical Society Board and it's there thinking of doing some really interesting things.
Wait, wait, wait. I, I know that. Yeah, Mary, right. I'm talking about, is there some, an idea related to Sustainable Bethel Commission that you would like to bring forward?
I, I, I think Catherine, it's important for, you know, people on the commission maybe to know what other organizations are thinking of doing because it might bring something to mind. I mean, I think as a commission, we should also be thinking about things that, um, programs or talks or things like that that we could bring to, to the 250. Um, I don't think it has to be so segmented into different organizations. I think this can be some crossover. And, um, so I was just going to say they were thinking about doing a tavern night and having games and that kind of thing. Um, also, uh, Pat Wild is, um, going to give a, a couple of talks at the library. Um, I also met with somebody, um, um, because my husband was sworn in as a son of the American Revolution. Um, and, uh, the gentleman that, uh, did the swearing in also has a lot of knowledge about, um, the Revolutionary War and, you know, uh, troops marching down Route Six. Um, their organization has something, um, the Liberty Tree, which is an elm, the Liberty Elm, and, uh, they're trying to put one in every state. And, you know, so that's something, say, like the garden club might want to participate in. Um, you know, it just, those are some things that are out there. The Boy Scouts have, um, a couple of different badges um, that they could be working on. And I think isn't the 250 Commission, they're trying to reach out to organizations and get some information out there. I don't think a lot of people know, you know, or are thinking about things that they can do. So there's just a couple of things that I know I've heard about. So.
Great. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a comment. Um, it's more about our last meeting. I think it was a really missed opportunity for uh, inclusion, for equity access, for, um, transparency and collaboration. Uh, I think excluding that the Patriotic Association sponsored the postcards that are informing the community of the Bethel 250 events. Um, it, it just, it didn't uphold what Sustainable Commission, uh, is supposed to be about, about community access, about municipal collaboration and community partnership. So especially if it's something that's going to be public record, it just, it hinders, uh, the, the collaborative, uh, spirit. I think like what Chris is saying, things are really scattered and segmented. Um, I think the commission was also under the impression that we would have a much larger role in the planning of how Bethel 250 was going to happen and be rolled out to town. So, you know, I, I hope and encourage everybody here to be forthright, transparent, um, collaborative, and really keep in mind that equitable access to all community members means amplifying that message, not excluding or keeping secret or, you know, all these things that I, in my opinion, just hinder the event from being a an actual community event that's open to people that, you know, we, we want to publicize that the Patriotic Association is doing. We want to publicize that all these different organizations are involved because that is going to encourage the wide array of residents to be excited and looking forward to ways to participate and ways to engage with the, with the event. So I just, I hope that we keep that in mind moving forward. That's it.
Okay. Um, commissioner reports. So anything, Krista, on the Urban Forestry Pollinator Pathway Program? You're on mute.
Okay, so I did a little bit of, um, uh, research on the pollinator pa- pathway because, um, Dana was, um, she put me on an email, um, with Jamie, um, who is in char- is she the whole, all of Connecticut, I think? And so what I kind of discovered was, and I'd like to share my screen so that I can, let's see. Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. So this is their, this is their homepage and, um, and so what they, let's see, can I go to this? Wait a minute. Now I need to go back to, let's see. How do I switch? Stop sharing? And then go back to this. Did I drop off?
No.
Huh? Um. Okay, wait a minute. All right. So still showing this now. Let's see. I wanted to share a different screen, but maybe I could just go from, from here. So, um, if I wanted to do, um, let's see, get involved. Start a pathway in my town. I went through the setting four. Now I can't. Okay, let's see. Wait a minute now. Events Resources.
You want to just talk about it?
Yeah, well, so what they did was, um, so there is a map. Um, but it's, you go and you register your garden. Here we go. And you see there's a pollinator pathway. So what, what was given to, um, or what was in the email was a toolkit to get the community involved with, um, get the community involved with, um, uh, you know, starting a pathway. So like I would be the, like someone would be the, the chairperson. They would go to, you know, different organizations and say, please, you know, start a pollinator pathway. And it was like a little toolkit for that. And what I was thinking about when I, um, was looking into this was some of our existing gardens are already on the pollinator pathway. Let's see now. So here is, and you can do just like an address and then this like has nothing behind it. Um, but, uh.
Do you want to try sharing your screen again or?
Oh, it's not sharing now?
No.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute. Okay.
Oh, yay.
Here we are again. Sorry about that. Okay. So, so then like it has all the, these little barflies are the pollinator pathways in the, in the area. And so then, um, let's see, I have to go to the, to the map itself. Um, so then if I click on Rogers Park, um, then it goes and it shows me like what Rogers Park has. And then, um, if I, oh, and that doesn't share because it's not sharing. Um, but then, uh, so this is what I thought, and it's pretty easy to go and, um, register. So I thought the first step maybe is to register some of our existing, um, pollinator pathways. And so I can, you know, do that, um, with what we have so far.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Then we can promote it. That'd be great.
Yeah. And then I, okay, and then I, um.
I have a question, Krista.
Okay, yep.
For, so I'm assuming you're going to document the existing pollinator gardens, right? Will there, I know that there's a toolkit, but will you be supporting potentially new people interested in creating a new pollinator place?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I certainly could. Let me just, um, let's see here. I gotta open up the toolkit. All right. And then I think I've got this now.
Yeah, sure.
Yep, I'm trying. Here's the, here's the toolkit. Um, and so, you know, this is like how to start a pollinator pathway. So if someone's interested in it, then they can contact you. And I think that this is how, like Jamie, since, since you registered Dana and then you put my name on it as well, if someone were to come on a higher level to Jamie, she would then, depending on where they live, direct them to someone like myself or you. And, but if you wanted to take a proactive, um, if you wanted to take a proactive, um, uh, stance on, on getting more people involved, then you might want to do something like what this, um, toolkit suggests, which is to have a community event and to talk about what a pollinator po- pathway is and how to get involved.
Is there something that the garden club is involved in?
Uh, no, no, we have, we have a lot of, I mean, we have, we have a butterfly garden at Parloa Park, um, that could be on the pollinator pathway. Um, and, uh, we have multiple other garden, municipal gardens that could technically be considered, um, pollinator pathways. So we're kind of doing it. We haven't registered any of our gardens to be pollinator pa- pathways.
Oh, is there something that could be, well, yeah, because the garden club, that's the it group for this kind of stuff, right?
Yeah.
So maybe it's a collaboration, right? With, since you, you've already registered your name as part of Sustainable Bethel, which are also part of the garden club that, that could.
Right.
And because the garden club has that knowledge and expertise and what this means. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and we're, we're kind of involved in it. By, uh, you know, as I was saying, did, did someone have a question? Nico, did you have a question?
No, he was just, what he just kind of flashed up there to click on something.
Okay.
This is Nico. Good evening. I was just suggesting that you click on the one in Bethel.
Okay, Nico, you're like part of the public. I, I can't have you speaking.
Nicholas Jordan for the record.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Gabrielle.
Uh, do the rain gardens at Macau?
Yes.
Then it count or would they?
Yes. So those could be registered as well. And then also the project, um, so the garden club is working with, um, with a life scout on an eagle project, um, to reestablish some natives plantings that are in, um, that were in Macau Park, uh, and then they got swallowed up by invasives. And, um, so I was approached at, as a garden club, uh, member at, to sort of sponsor or, or be the benefactor, the garden club, be the benefactor of an eagle scout project which would reestablish, uh, a native garden in Macau Park. Um, based upon what Troop 54 had done. And this is Troop 71 that this life scout is, is from. And so the garden club has been working with him. Um, and he participated in the Friends of Bethel uh, Park and Rec. They had a, a removal of invasives on August 16th. And, um, he got his troop to come and clear the area where they want to put this garden. And, um, and so he's working and I'm working with him to, um, go through and establish this garden. And when it's done, it could be registered as a pollinator garden as well.
Cool.
Yeah.
So do you think, um, the collaboration between the garden club and Sustainable Bethel, once every, all of this information is entered, then that could be promoted social media, it can be email, it could be, so people know where the pollinator pathways are, are?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that's the point of the map is that you would register, you would register the garden with the Pollinator Pathway Organization. And that way someone who's looking for pollinator pathways or is interested in establishing one could go to the map and say, well, what exists already? And what do they look like? And, you know, and then you kind of go from there.
So I'm looking at this a little bigger. So once all of this is entered and there's this collaborative effort with the garden club, which you're a part of, and again, you do a fabulous job, um, then we can promote this in different ways. So there's more awareness of what these are. And if somebody wants to start it, this is what they do. You know, so what do you think about that?
Yeah, I mean, um, I think registering them is the, is, will be the first step. And, and then we can say, say like at Earth Day or at, at some other event or whatever, like these gardens have been registered with the Pollinator Pathway Organization. And, um, and then people who want more information can then go to that website and, and, uh, and see that. And, and we can promote it that, you know, we registered via the Sustainable Bethel.
You know, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity here. So we'll, we'll talk about it. But yeah, if you want to like.
I'll start, I'll start out with the existing gardens, like the rain garden and the, and the, um, the one at, uh, Parloa Park and just get those on the map and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay.
One of the features that the Pollinator Pathway offers is they have signage, which you can purchase for a small fee. So having that signage might generate some of that interest.
Yes, that's a great idea.
I don't know, Sustainable Bethel, or maybe you could coordinate with the garden club to kind of get some funding to get those for our existing ones.
Yep. I think that's a really good idea. All right. We can get, so Krista, thank you very much. We definitely will continue this because I think it's a really important part of what we do here. Okay.
Oh, and I had it, um, on one of the other things, the urban forestry. I haven't had a chance. You, you, uh, sent me a link.
Oh, yeah, for a brand, but it was for the, for garden club or the, yeah, for the garden club.
Yeah, but, but I, I think too, one thing that we should, um, because I was talking with Rachel and, um, so, you know, Parloa Park is in the early stages right now of, you know, doing the, the basketball court and then expanding the playground and all that sort of thing. And then expanding the playground and all that sort of thing. But, um. They're going to, at some point, want trees put in along the pathway where they're gonna have benches and that sort of thing. And I think we should try to be involved in that. And I was thinking that I would continue to research some of the things that you have sent me. To see if we can't get some kind of grant money or something like that to, um, purchase those trees. And then, kind of like as a sideline, it'll, it'll give us the ability to choose the proper tree.
That, that would be awesome. That's why I send you these things, because I don't know a lot about them. You do. But, so thank you very much for all of this. It's very helpful.
Um, okay, Krista, do you have an existing list of like native trees?
Yes, and the Pollinator Pathway Organization also has one. And there are lots and lots of lists out there. And, um, and I had a list, um, so, uh, what Troop 54 had put in there. Was all of the plant material that they had put on there is on all of these other lists. But I had started with that and I went with George, is the eagle scout or the life scout that's, um, that I'm working with. And I took him to Planters Choice and, and dragged him around looking at plants. Um, to show him what they look like, so that he can then place them properly and all that sort of thing. So, um, yes, there is a list.
Okay, well, if you're interested, the Bethel Land Trust also has a list that we put together, uh, when we were. Couldn't, you know, planning to give away saplings for Earth Day with, uh, Bethel Lions Club. But it sort of. Didn't happen the way it was planned because of different reasons. So there is an existing list that I can share with you if you.
Is it, is that on the, is that on the Land Trust website?
It's not, it's just like an internal thing.
Oh, okay, I would be very interested.
Yeah, we're working on the website.
Okay.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Yep.
Great job, thank you. Um, Gabrielle, anything on the Wisconsin Student Stewart Project?
Nope.
Okay. Anything on Earth Day?
Oh.
Okay. Alright, is there any other business? Okay. Peter, did you say something?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
I.
Pose, sentence, no. Okay, thank you, everybody.